Call meeting order. Please rise and join me in the pleasure of this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law. Additions, changes to the agenda. I have one item. Where we have 120.0 with motion to enter into executive session. What I'm going to add is 120. Motion to approve volunteer coaches. Track would be James Nelson and James O'Neil. Golf would be Michael Olson and Thea DeGray York. So that will be item number 120.0. Motion to enter into executive session then becomes 121. And motion to adjourn would be 122. Any questions? Okay. Disclosure of actual or potential conflicts of interest. Okay. We've got a couple of things here on our public input. We will go with a report from the government class. Tripp, Tripp, you appear first.
Just me, I guess. It's like I'm a whole class today. So, as a class, we went to the state Capitol. And in our US government class, we have both of our classes, we have Senate and House Representatives. So we're passing bills without, or throughout the high school. Some of the bills we passed were like being able to sit in our vehicles at lunch. And another one was vending machine food. There's a few more that we passed. I think we're doing better than the Senate in this year's class. They're a little slow. Yeah, we went to the state Capitol. We met with our district representative and we met with our senator. So what we did there was we walked in the building and architecture is pretty cool. Went throughout the floor and we saw where all the carts were, all the blue squares, all the different colored tiles. We met with Liz May and we walked through the House floor. We got to experience what it looked like down there. Then we went to the Senate side with Red Dawn. And we walked through the floor there. They gave us a gavel. We have a few pictures. I don't know if those were anything. Yeah, we have a few pictures there. We didn't sit on the Senate floor to listen to their bills, but we did go to the House. They actually had a really, wasn't like a hot topic. It was parental rights. And they were talking about protecting children. And it brought a lot of emotion and there was a lot of people, wouldn't say arguing, but pushing for people not to approve the bill because it wasn't specifically amended. So they actually passed it one time through the House. They sent it to the Senate. And I think it was back again to be
Can I add an amendment?
Yeah, they added an amendment that they didn't really agree with completely because it wasn't super specific. Yeah, we had a lot of people talking about it. A lot of Sioux Falls representatives were pretty, pretty emotional about that one. Perry Pootier was one of the emotional ones from around here. She made a, how long was her speech? It was like five. Did she get extra time from? Yeah, they gave her extra time because she was, she brought her kid in. She was giving a heartfelt speech. You guys have to go back and watch it if you can. It was, it was pretty, pretty intense for a second there. I think one person was told to shut up. Yeah, it was a fun trip. We got to see all the geese and all the crap that was on the ground. It was, it was pretty fun. A lot of us, I mean, we had a good time. So, yeah.
Do you feel like going helped you understand what you're doing in your classroom?
Oh, yeah. It went, it went hand in hand with what we're doing in class. So it was really cool to see what it was actually like and what was actually happening in our government.
So as, as a class, you you were saying that you, you had some bills that you guys passed and so on and so forth?
You guys might see those soon.
Were any of them vetoed?
Uh, we, we pitched and pulled a few of them. Some of our kids were very happy about it. It was, it was more jokes though. Yeah, we had a few shut down. We had two in our class so far, but we passed five bills. So we'll see what happens in the Senate. It's pretty fun. I got to either, I'm the speaker in the House actually, so I'm sitting up there. You can speak, you can't speak, you can speak, you spoke twice, you spoke too long.
Any questions? Well, I'm glad you had the opportunity to go. It, it's something to really see and I'm glad that you enjoyed it and got some vital information out of it. So thank you for coming and reporting to us. Okay, Jay.
I forgot my paper in my locker, so I will read off the computer. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nisha and I'm junior at JAG. I'm a JAG junior JAG member, excuse me. We took 23 students to Dakota Wesley University for an annual career development conference last Tuesday, Mitchell South Dakota. During the morning, they split 300 students into different groups for competition. For a statewide project, we filled socks with essential supplies for our homeless and unhoused people in the area. Do you guys want to work? The students competed in prepared speaking activities, JAG knowledgeable tournament, project-based learning presentation and state officer interview process, which Caitlin Frye won. She is now the JAG state secretary. The non-senators for campus in the morning while teams were competing. One of four, a group of four students presented the PBL on the treadmill. Three prepared speakers, Rosette Ainsley made it to the top six. Three of our knowledgeable teams competed in the knowledgeable tournament, which is a JAG trivia Jeopardy-like competition. One team made it to nationals. In the afternoon, they handed out awards. This conference is meant, conference is meant to help JAG students step into the spotlight to compete and interact at a high level. Please follow strict guidelines for competition, dress and attitude. And it was an eye opening opportunity for me. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions?
So the items you're passing, is that what's in the, you put in the socks? So what, what are you doing? What's your next project?
These ladies at the junior class are still working on the treasure hut. Now they're going to prepare for nationals. And what did you work on today during class?
Resumes.
So where is nationals and when?
It's in April.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
How many of you are going? I'm sorry, I'll share.
Eight.
Okay, very good. Awesome. What are you looking forward to the most during that trip?
Uh, probably like speaking at this, you know, kind of sending and talking to people.
Cindy?
Yes, can I get what she wrote up for this from?
Yeah.
Can you email it to me tomorrow?
Or she can send you the one she printed and she forgot to do it.
She'll be the one who printed. That would be wonderful. Just email it to me. Thank you.
Any more questions? Well, we certainly thank you for coming and giving your report and we enjoy hearing from the students. We really do. And we, we would encourage more and more groups and students to come and report to the board. We, 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 we don't bite. So thank you for coming. And I have one more republic, and that would be Tim.
Just want to briefly comment on the state basketball tournament. My voice is still kind of gone. Not yelling at the refs. Our students, fans, coaches, cheerleaders, cheer coaches are so awesome. I mean, everybody saw it. It made you so proud to be there. I mean, it, I couldn't find any spot where you'd be going, oh, why'd they do that? Our, our guys were great. Everybody. And I think public needs to know, part of my stories going to address that. We're doing a tap thing on it, but it was amazing how, and you could tell by when our team played in the championship match, almost every school was cheering for us. And you know, dudes, our girls are looking up and the stands are just cheering and and just hearing, talking to people on the side, different schools are complimenting us on our kids. And see, we had, those of us who had purple shirts on, actions, had Bennett County. They'd approach us and talk about our team and our, our players, coaches, everybody. It was impressive. Did you guys see them? Some of you guys were there and most of you guys were there, but you know, it was, we can be very happy. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you for that comment, Tim. Okay, item number 109. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 110. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Kayla. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Discussion. Kayla, you got the bills? Anything there?
Nope, I was great.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Administrative and committee reports. Mine's really short. Supposed to have a meeting in Phillip with, tomorrow with service co-op. We're going to meet at three o'clock. The meeting was going to be quite long because we're going to be redoing the entire personnel handbook. I've got a copy of it and Carol's been going through it and stuff and, but with the weather forecast, they decided that we're going to do it Zoom and we'll move that meeting to April. So and the only other thing is we've got a technology meeting Wednesday, right? So, and that's all I've got. Carol?
Good evening, everyone. I want to piggyback off Tim and congratulations to the Bennett County girls' basketball team on a great season and a great show in Karen. I have to commend our student body on their cheering, their behavior. At one point, I had to ask them not to get overexcited, you know, and, and go onto the floor. It's really hard because I got out of the coach's box at one point trying to see what was going on. So I, I understood that and it was, it was just a very emotional and wonderful to see the support. So congratulations to them. I also want to congratulate the wrestling team on going to state and their performance. I need to get to one of those because it looks like a very intense event as well. And we had some different students placed there. So on Friday, we had the Bennett, Bennett County Pow Wow. It was held at the Warrior Center. The showcasing, it was showcasing culture and community spirit. There were 12 high school hand games teams in the Commons area and 13 middle and elementary teams of hand games. So I think that was a very good showing. Unfortunately, it's hard to be in two places at once, but it sounded like it was a very successful event for us. We were awarded the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Grant. So we're working on pulling all that together when we'll have our training and getting ready for next year to implement that. We're very pleased to have that. Academic and school updates, makeup days. We are making up February 19th on March 28th, just so everybody remembers, we have school on that day. March 7th, this Friday, we, no. On March 7th in service, it was postponed and it is scheduled for April 4th. So we'll make up that on April 4th. Promise scheduled for April 12th, which is hard to believe. That'd be history when we meet again. So we need to make sure we remember that. The 2025-26 school calendar is currently being discussed and prepared for board approval. We're going to need to end, listen to some ideas tomorrow night. Accreditation review. The accreditation review was held on March 4th. Overall, we performed well, but we knew we were going to have some findings going into that. We have three months to correct that. And we're very confident that we'll be able to do that. Evaluations for all staff are ongoing. Freshman impact was rescheduled for April 10th. That will also be history when we, we meet again. It will be my first experience with that. I'm excited. It sounds like a a very impactful event for our students. Administrative and faculty updates. Technology committee is meeting on the 19th at 2:30. Free River Special Services Cooperative Meeting for Superintendents is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Emergency management for Bennett County is scheduled for March 19th on Wednesday and several of us try to attend that as well. I want to continue the conversation with sharing a resource officers. We want to keep, keep that conversation going. E3 practice drills have been ongoing for different emergencies. We still need to do a little bit more of that and then we can bring in the local ambulance, fire and law enforcement. And we're going to have the application on. Facilities improvement. We're working, I'm going to get a floor cover for the Warrior Center. And I have a new quote on that. We want one that, you know, have the tape that you can just roll out. So we're going to look at that. Parking lot construction may start next Monday, but it's going to come down, maybe check the frost level and then want to get started on that. So that'll be exciting to have that completed. Summer projects, the east side of the Commons entrance and then the landscaping there. Concrete project for a propane tank north of the new addition where we're worried about the the washout, those kinds of things over there. Roofing plan, AC is the priority there. Replacing lighting in the AC. We have a quote for that. I believe now moving on. And then adding a number one diesel bulk tank, kind of to try to help relieve some of the stress for air and having bus drivers stop all over where they're going to put number one in when it's cold. Athletic program updates. The track program expansion. We've been talking about high jump pole vault pits and javelin. I talked to Coach Hicks last week and we're going to wait next year so we can budget for the high jump pit and keep working on the pole vault pit. And we have some javelins ordered, just not sure where we're going to throw them yet. So Kent's going to evaluate the old pole vault area and see if that's, that's doable or not. So as we warm up here and get rid of some of the debris over there, we'll have updates on that. Family engagement activities were held and feedback from discussions with families and students has been shared with administration. The class of 2025 was a very impressive group. They asked me to come over to their class meeting and talk to them about graduation and whether they could choose whether they had it in the Warrior Center or in the Legion. It's probably one of my highlights of the year so far is getting to visit with the kids, getting to listen to their their abilities to advocate for themselves. And you know, that's why we're here. So it's easy to put a smile on your face face when you're interacting with them and the rationales they had, you know, they were prepared, had, were able to speak to their decision and how they voted. And not everyone voted yes, but it was agreeable. So I was very pleased and very proud of them. And told them to continue to invite me to different things that are going on. Oh, I'm trying to continue to keep you updated on what's going on, on the effects and efforts of student success, facilities and engagement that we're doing. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for the board?
Carol, I'll add real quick. You mentioned the Pow Wow. We did live stream that. So if anybody wants to, everything was in the gymnasium. And it's kind of a wide angle shot. It's just static, static the whole time. But anybody wants to see anything that took place in the gymnasium, that is on the school districts, what you do.
Well, thank you.
So are the, they're going to have graduation at the Legion then?
Yes. Yes. That's what they, that was their decision. So a little bit smaller class, they said, and a little more intimate for them and their families. So and hopefully a parking lot will be done. So it won't be real far long to, to get to the Legion.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, Carrie?
For attendance, we're still working on the Warrior Cup Challenge and in oh, I think I have this wrong. I have January, but it's February. It should be February. And February, the seniors won with 85.82 and they got M and M cookies for that. They were still battling. Everybody's still battling the cold until the season in February. So we, we kind of had some lower numbers and the whole total school for the month of February was sitting at 84.37 attendance at that time period. Currently, the sophomores are in the lead. So we've had a different leader every month. And so I, and I'm starting to hear the competitiveness in the hallway. I hear a couple of things coming around. So that's kind of nice. We'll be doing testing for the South Dakota State Assessment. That will be happening March 25th through the 27th. On that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at the high school level. And they're tested in English, language arts, math and science. For student happenings, it's been a really busy month. You've heard a couple of them already. One, a couple of the other things that have happened is on February 26th, the earth and space science classes, classes went to Shadrin to the planetarium and the Eleanor Barber Cook Museum at the Shadrin College Campus. They were very, very interested in what they saw. They were also wanting to go back later this year and I, I said, we need to plan for next year, but there's a lot of different things that they can see. There was part of, somebody that spoke to them that said, you know, you can come in, we can, you know, do different science experiments and just really inviting for our students. So it was nice to see that connection being made. A Haregen music contest was held in Murdo on March 5th and Sophia May was one of our, was our Bennett County representative. She received a superior with her baritone performance and she'll be competing at the All-State Band starting March 27th. So that's exciting. We had three Bennett County High School winners for the post 240 American Legion Auxiliary Essay and Poster Competitions. We had Olivia placed first in the Class V poster competition. So Shayana placed first in the Class IV poster competition and Jonathan placed first in the Class V essay competition. So very nice representation there as well. You heard the JAG students already tonight and you heard from the seniors already tonight. So I don't think there's anything apart from my report there. So any questions?
What's the last names of those kids, please?
I can get those to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, Kayla?
So I broke down the attendance also for you versus some of the eighth grade. Sickness definitely, you know, of course played a big part in it. But I broke it down. I, I thought it was really interesting looking at how, you know, our perfect attendance and 98% is what we're wanting to have. But then I wanted you to see also kind of where everybody else was at. You know, looking at, you know, 10 kids right there with that almost 98%. And then just, just breaking it down is kind of interesting. I got that for you. Of course, our testing is coming up as well. We do our testing in the particular classrooms. So for math, during their math time is when they do the test. And so it may take a couple of days to be able to do that. We've found that they are more successful being in their own habitat during their own time, not taking a whole day away and redoing a schedule. So we've found that they do that better. So the first week of April is our math. The second week is our ELA. And then eighth graders do science and do that the third week. And then we should have plenty of time in a couple of weeks after that to do any makeup testing that we need to do. Our third quarter classes for the exploratory are finished. So they are starting new ones. Means they're rotated to something different this fourth quarter. So those are just getting started. I wanted to make sure to shout out the Tuesday, Thursday, sixth grade math kids. It was, I happened to walk in on this class. They were learning algebra. And the exciting thing for them was that they, they were learning how to balance an equation. So for example, if you're seeing minus five plus and then a parenthesis minus four, I mean, that's a, that's a hard concept. But they were learning how to balance it and how to clean up the mess. And they had all of these words they were using and phrases and hand movements. And I actually interrupted the class and they looked at me, we love algebra. You know, and that was exciting. Well, then throughout, I mean, the last couple of weeks, one of the students in particular, every time he walks by me goes, I just love algebra. I just love algebra. And this is a sixth grader, you know, and, and they got called, they had, their math class actually got interrupted for something and they had to leave. And one kid literally was dancing, I can't wait till we get back to algebra. So I really wanted to shout out those kids because the, you know, to see the excitement in that group and it wasn't fake. They were so excited about what they were learning. It, it was amazing. So I wanted to shout out to that Tuesday, Thursday group and Mrs. Kottenbach because it was great to see the enthusiasm. I love going in there and watching them right now because they are all I love going in there and watching them right now because they are all excited to learn math, which you don't always get. And so that group, the whole thing. So I really wanted to make sure that you guys heard that as well. I didn't put down on here, but next week, the eighth grade will be going to the School of Mines for their cultural trip. So I'll report more on that next time. The Ag Olympics went to fill up this year, they're, they're struggling a little bit. I think the English Language Arts questions are really getting them this year. They're doing pretty good in math and some of the others, but they're, they're just struggling. And they're, they're doing really well, but I think they're just, you know, they come back and they're like, oh, we just knew it. But you know, it's just getting it together and, and all of that. And we'll have more competitions coming up. We'll host, be hosting ours the next couple of weeks also. And then I just shared with you our honor roll students. Pretty good numbers there.
Questions from the board? Thank you, Michaela. Melissa's not here, you do have her report. Do you have any questions on her report? Okay. Amy?
You guys kind of have all the information. I kept writing stuff down and like, that's just in my head, a lot of planning going on right now for next year, kind of my start. I did have some things come back on the title trade. I'm not sure why it has to be submitted by October, but it was fixed. And they just used, I mean, hey, we need to have, these need to be reworded or whatever, but that's good. Our tech committee, basically, we're going to look at our survey and kind of look at, right now it's planning for next year. And so trying to take into consideration the, where school needs to go as far as technology has changed so much, I would say in the last three years, just with introduction of AI and how we use it, how our kids use it. And so we kind of have to pay attention to what supports our teachers need. And also continuing with our family engagement that we started. And so how to make all that, there's only so many days, how to make that all fit. But also give a request of more time with my staff, which is important for our principals and our staff to meet together. So how can we make that meld together? I'm still waiting, I haven't heard anything on any equipment grant for the walk through fridge. So we're all checking with that. And I hope we haven't heard anything on our after school program either. So. We will be doing a steam camp this summer again. And we have our annual steam night coming up. Lotta Misari Rusey, I'm closer part. She is a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of fun to plan this event. It's a lot of work, but there's some fun stuff coming up. So you want to come see all the toothpaste?
Who wants to come to the equalization meeting from the school board?
Who's on that? That's right, Dallas.
What?
You weren't here.
Thank you.
Sorry, y'all.
I was you animals too.
You need to leave that open, you'll be back before we're done. No, you will be.
Oh, will I?
Yeah, you will be.
I'll teach you.
Any questions?
Any questions for the board? Thank you, Amy. Joe, anything?
Yes.
Oh.
I know. We have an election April late. We have incumbent Dallas Lawton running, also Abby O'Neil, Roy Gutho and Judge Con.
Questions? I had, should have been my report, I forgot about it. I have a thank you here to the Bennett County School District. Thank you for the beautiful arrangement for Mom's funeral, Judy Clausen and family. Item number one twelve, I need a motion to accept the following reservations at the end of 2024-2025 school year. Rob Cotton, BCHS instructor. Motion by Ryan, so I have a second. Second by Scott, board discussion.
This is going to be a hard one to replace.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one thirteen, a motion to accept the resignation of Florentino Lozaro, MGS instructor, effective immediately. Motion by Scott, second, second by Kayla, board discussion. Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one fourteen, a motion to accept the retirement of Kerry Library, MGS instructor after thirty-four years of service. Motion by Scott, do I have a second? Second by Ryan, board discussion. Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one fifteen, motion to approve the following surplus. Twenty-five Chromebooks, MGS, ten iPads, MGS, three Apple Desktops, MGS, six PCs, MGS, one battery backup, MGS, one cash server, MGS, five DVD VCR, MGS. Motion by Kayla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, board discussion. Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one sixteen, motion to approve the acceptance of the fiscal year ending June 2024 audit by the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. Motion by Kayla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion. Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one seventeen, motion to approve five days from the BCC EA sickly bank for Marty Wounded Arrow.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, board discussion. And I think I asked this, but BCC EA approved this, right?
Yes, I have their approval letter signed.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one eighteen, motion to approve, to move, I'm sorry, the April board meeting from April twenty-first to April fourteenth at five o'clock in the library community room. April twenty-first is Easter Monday. Motion by Kayla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, board discussion. Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Before I ask for the motion, just a quick comment on it, we've already, we've discussed this item here before, so. I need a motion, a motion to move the May board meeting from May nineteenth to May twelve, twenty twenty-five at four PM because we have some other activities going on. In the library community room.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second? Second by Kayla, board discussion.
Let's get a stress that it's at four o'clock instead of five.
What?
We're stressing it's at four o'clock instead of five.
Right.
So we can get done in time to go to.
That's, that's why I had Joe put that on here at four. Normally it's not a, a, a big meeting anyway, but we'll, we'll go four o'clock so we can get to the athletic banquet. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number one twenty, motion to approve the volunteer coaches track, James Nelson, James O'Neill, Golf, Mike Olson, Thea Gray York. Motion by Kayla, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion. They have gone through, the coaches fill out these forms, reasoning on why and so on and so forth. And they've been approved by Larry. And the reason, the reason for her here is you wanted to see why we needed them. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I have to. Motion carries. Item one twenty-one, I need a motion to enter new executive session for personnel matters pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two one, student issues pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, negotiations pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, legal issues pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two with possible action.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kayla, board discussion. Reminder, board confidentiality of what is discussed in executive session must strictly be adhered to. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session.
I declare a side of executive session at?
Six forty-nine.
Six forty-nine. I need a motion to adjourn. Most my doubts, second. Second by care, board discussion. Hearing not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same side, motion carries. We are adjourned. Don't forget people, uh, April and May meetings have been moved. And Joel set stuff out to remind us.
I remember today, but what I remember on the fourth?
That's no problem.
Uh, I'll try to remember to set out reminders.
Well, if you set out the agenda, that'll be good enough.
Have a good week guys, have a good week.